Okay. This special meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I just really wanted to extend a warm welcome to those present and also to our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I just want to ask you right now if you would please just turn off your cell phones to silent, if you have not already done so. We appreciate the time you've taken to join us and for your interest in Waco Independent School District. We're just going to take a couple of moments right now for prayer contemplation and take a quick moment of silence. Are there any audience for guests? No one signed up? Okay, thank you. Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda is consider and take appropriate action concerning the resolution identifying hazardous traffic conditions. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Or is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, number four, consider and discuss, take appropriate action regarding the 2022-2023 compensation plan. Dr. Lopez, I believe that is you. I also wanted to say as you're walking down here, wonderful job hosting the huddles. It was really great to see your enthusiasm and just all your kind words and encouragement for our staffs.
It'll be a great year, isn't it?
It is, it is.
Well, good evening, Madam President, Dr. Cannon, members of the board. On May 11th, you all approved the largest part of our compensation plan, which included salary increases and adjustments. We are bringing you the remaining pieces of that compensation plan, which include temporary and extra duty rate schedule, our increased daily rates for our substitutes. We are increasing that this year. Our hope is that with that increase, we will retain the subs that we currently have and recruit some new subs, which we are calling guest educators now. We are also looking to amend our stipend schedule for some newly created stipends, two of which are in the transformation zone. Of course, we are increasing the district contribution for health insurance effective January 1st, 2023 by 6.5%. So that'll move from $428 to $456 per employee per month. And we will continue the annual contribution of $500 through the flexible spending account for any employee who chooses to waive our insurance coverage. It has been the goal of this district and this board to make sure that we keep a zero premium employee only plan. And with this 6.5% increase, that is exactly what will happen, and it will be an estimated cost of $626,000. The administrative recommendation is that you approve the remaining components of the 2022-2023 employee compensation plan as presented.
Okay. Are there any questions? Or comments? Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Actually, I did have a question, if you don't mind. Back on, I was looking at the transformation zone, most of the stipends, I wanted to thank you so much for doing that. You know, I know that those extracurricular activities, the teachers spend a lot of time in doing stuff outside of the school day. So on the executive coach, chief academic officer transformation Waco, what is that?
That is, that particular stipend is going to be issued to, or is currently being issued to, the current principal of J.H. Hines. She is doing a dual role, I believe, for them as an academic officer, as well as executive coach for other principals and other leadership within their zone.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that was just a larger stipend. I thought maybe that was going to all of the leadership, you know, on the different zone.
No, that's going to one individual as part of her compensation plan, as part of her compensation.
Because she has other duties besides just being a principal?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, well, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the 2022-23 employee compensation plan as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vudania. And Mr. Davis is second. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lopez.
Thank you.
Oh, we need a vote. I'm so sorry. Thank you. This is Izetti. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Number five, presentation and discussion of the proposed budget tax rate for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. Ms. Davis, this is going to be riveting and exciting.
Sorry. We all know that's not really... I was talking yesterday, I say, you know, a lot of districts don't put very many numbers. I haven't learned that yet. I'm not sure I can do a finance presentation without some numbers in it, but anyway, I'll try to make this as painless as possible.
I appreciate the detail. I appreciate it.
What you have in your packet for the budget, you have the schedule of the official budget, which is the three funds that are adopted in the budget, and then you've got supplemental schedule to that that gives you a little bit more detail by the budget, gives you a comparison for the last three years. And then you have a schedule of other proposed budgets that the board adopts. Normally, most districts wouldn't have this, but we are the fiscal agent for the Challenge Academy here and the day school for the deaf, so you have to adopt a budget for those as fiscal agent. And then we have Guam and Guaca that are semi-general fund, so you also adopt those budgets. But there in your packet, you will also see, there's a page at the very end of the presentation that is a very strange document. It's required by law. We have to post it on our website as a proposed budget. What it does is combine the general fund, food service fund, and debt service fund all together, and then kind of shows that change between years. As an accountant, that has no meaning for those funds to be combined, really, but this, like I said, this is a requirement of the law. So we'll go ahead and get started in the presentation. Okay. So again, this is the proposed budget and tax rate for the 2022-23 school year. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about legal requirements. We have new board members, and so I want to talk a little bit more about a couple of these things than we would maybe do if you guys had been here through another budget cycle. Then we're going to update you on that enrollment and average daily attendance, because we do have, of course, those final PEEMs numbers for the six-six weeks and how that hold harmless came out. Then we'll look at our 2022 local property values and tax rates. And then look at that general fund just by itself, an overview, kind of look at the revenues for the transformation zone, because the transformation zone campuses are part of our general fund, even though they manage those funds themselves and they get that revenue that's generated from this foundation school program, it's still part of our general fund as we report it. And then we'll look at some of the issues impacting the budget and the fund balances. And then lastly, we'll just look at those other adopted budgets. So, legal requirements for adopting a budget. So they have to be adopted, they have to be developed in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That means a modified accrual basis, a little bit different from what you'll see in private industry. That means our revenues are recognized when we receive them, so we don't, we don't recognize in the fund financials, we don't recognize the levy, the tax rate levy. We have a couple of different sets of financials that you'll see as we talk about the annual financial report that actually recognizes the levy, but for our purposes, we just recognize tax revenue as it's received. And then we do recognize expenditures more on a full accrual basis, and so we do recognize them when services are rendered or goods are received, except we do have a different accounting treatment for fixed assets. We don't really show them. We expense them as we purchase them, and the same with debt service. We just show debt service as we pay principal and interest. So it's a little bit different from what you might see in private industry. For our districts with a September 1 through August 31 fiscal year, as we have, the proposed budget must be prepared no longer than August 20, no later than August 20. Superintendent is designated to do that for you, because I don't think you all want to prepare that budget. Anyway, and then she kind of gives it to me, to us. So, and then we have to have a public hearing prior to adopting the budget and tax rate, and the budget must be, that's, we have to give a 10-day notice of that. Budget must be adopted by August 31st to give us the legal authority to spend money after August 31st. And so the last day to adopt the tax rate is September 30th, or 60 days after certification. Be a little earlier than September 30th this year, because we actually got our certification on the 22nd of July. The budget must be adopted before you adopt a tax rate. So you have to adopt that budget, and I think it's to sort of prevent people from adopting a lower tax rate and then a higher budget. You adopt that budget first. So I just want to show you a little bit, because when you look at the financial reports, we have over 60 funds in this district, and you guys are going to adopt budgets for about seven of those, because those are the ones that we, that the board has the legal authority to adopt the budgets. Most of those funds are grant funds, and the granting agency is considered the budget authority over those funds. We usually will bring those when we're applying for grants, like we use, I think you saw the ESER funds when we applied for that. But as I said, you don't actually approve budgets for like Title I or IDEA or Perkins Grant or any of those. So again, that shows though, dollar-wise, you are adopting budgets for most of the dollars in this district, because as you can see, that big red pie slice is the general fund, which is by far the biggest part of the dollars in this district. And then again, the debt service and food service funds. Food service is part of our special revenue funds, as are those other funds we will adopt. So we have factors that are influencing the budget process. We've talked a lot about student enrollment and how that impacts us. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Property values, collections particularly, they impact our state revenue, because there are, that's what creates our local share to generate state revenue. And then available federal funding, there is a real impact of that in the last few years with the ESER funds and picking up some of our general fund dollars. And then, of course, you know, some of what we're looking at, doing the salary increases to help with our recruitment and retention, and then a lot of, some of the state comp money and helping with the after effects of the pandemic. And then, of course, we're really looking at a lot in inflation right now, and was part of why we're doing that 6.5% increase in the health fund is because of the huge inflation there. Our goal, of course, is to preserve our instructional program and the quality of that. And then, of course, this year, you know, prioritizing student and student safety, we've got some additional funds that have gone into the budget for some initial projects, still looking at that, but we've got some initial projects we're going to start right away. And then, as I said, you know, retaining and recruiting quality staff, and then trying to, through all this, protect the district's fund balance, keep us in good solace. That's my goal.
That's great. And I just want to add, these are the priorities, and you'll see when we bring the district improvement plan forward, how they mesh. So in that first goal there with the programs, with quality of instruction and services, we're expanding our dual-language program. We're continuing to invest in special ed. We've been doing that, adding to special ed over the last three years to strengthen those programs. We're expanding our opportunity culture program, which was highly successful this last year. And safety, of course, is included, so you'll see some increases there, but these are those priorities. And then, of course, taking care of our staff and giving those raises while we have this challenging financial position that we have, and trying to, trying to keep the budget low while we do all of that. Yeah. So those were the, those are the priorities.
So, as we talked about funding the school districts, the main concept here is as your property values go up, your state funding goes down. So there's sometimes a misconception that we get that money if, from property values going up. Well, we don't. We have to compress our tax rate, so we collect less as far, I mean, not less taxes, but we do have to compress our tax rate. And again, that, our state foundation school program aid is going to go down. We'll see that sort of interplay when we look at that in a few minutes. So these are the things that really influence our, the funding. On property tax side, of course, the values are determined by the appraisal district. We don't determine those values. The tax rate is comprised of a maintenance and operations tax that funds our general fund, is that local match for our state revenue, and then the interest and sinking fund that pays the principal and interest on our bonded debt. So that's debt that is approved by the taxpayers. It doesn't include loans or something that we could possibly have, but we don't, in our general fund. And then, of course, the M and O rate is capped at that voter approval tax rate. We did have an election in 2015-16. We had got enrichment pennies of 17 cents at that time. That's been decreased. We'll look at that in a minute as well. And then our state foundation school program, those formulas are set by the legislature, and then TEA sort of puts them into a formula basis. Our basic allotment is 6,160. It's not adjusted for inflation. It's been that now for four years, so we have had no adjustments on the basic allotment. And then the allotments are impacted, of course, by enrollments. We've got a couple of different areas that are strictly based on student counts, average daily attendance. Most of our funding areas are based on ADA, and then those special population counts and bilingual and low socioeconomic counts, special education, and then those enrichment pennies, and then our property values and wealth. So this is kind of where we ended up after we had our six-six weeks. Did help us a little bit from what we were looking at before. Now, what TEA did come in and do this past year was our first four-six weeks, because the attendance was so low, it was actually based on the attendance rate from 1920. And so that helped us out, but we had to use the attendance from our fifth and sixth-six weeks, we had to take as it was. So did come up some. As you can see, there's the column that 12,501 have circled. That's what our ADA ended up being with hold harmless, without hold harmless, it was 11,922. So that made a 600 student difference in our ADA. That's $4 million for this district. So a major difference if we hadn't had that hold harmless. So that's why it's going to be really important for us to get that back up for this coming year, both in enrollment, which I don't have, I actually have a decrease, I'm showing a decrease in enrollment from 14086 to 1420, which is kind of what all my projection templates were showing. I'm using that, but I raised the ADA, the attendance percentage. As you can see in those previous years, we typically run at 90%. Now, 1920 was low at 76, because we only went the four-six weeks. Then 2021 was a little bit low too, at 89.6. This past year was only 84.6% attendance rate. So I'm bringing it back up to ADA. You know, I'm being optimistic, maybe a little pessimistic on the enrollment, a little optimistic on the ADA. Hopefully, we'll end up somewhere around there, but budgeting on is 12,337. This kind of looks what, is what it looks like graphically from between enrollment, that you see in the top red line, and then you see what our attendance rate is with hold harmless, and what the attendance rate was without hold harmless, and you see those huge, or attendance rather, not rate, but those huge changes that it made in 2019-20, and then, of course, this past year, a big change in 21-22. So this is, I'm not really going to go through this. This is kind of, I just put this out there so you could kind of see how we actually generate revenue. These are the various programs and the kinds of counts that we use for the programs, and I'm kind of showing you what it is for the three years. And then here's the rest of them, special ed, and some of the newer ones that we've had the last couple of years, like dyslexia and the residential placement facility.
Quick question. The enrollment number, numbers, is that set on a certain date, or is that an average of a month, or?
Yeah, we, we take an official count by the state. It's usually the last Friday in October, and that's called our PEEM snapshot. And so we'll, we'll do that again. We do it every year with the state, so we'll report that back to you at the end of October. And we'll watch enrollment from day one, day one on, and every day, we'll be watching our counts to see where we are and what we're looking like. And usually, you'll, you know, you'll kind of watch it rise after Labor Day, and it'll continue to go up typically through mid-October.
And then it kind of goes down in the spring again, because we have some more dropouts and all, especially at high school level. I always use the PEEMs date for enrollment, because I can always get back to that, because this is...
It's consistent. It's the same number.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions? Okay.
So then, here is what our local property values ended up at. The net taxable value that we started out with back end of April, when we got those preliminary values, and they said we were going to have a 31% increase, that was $10.2 billion. It ended up at 8.8, which is actually a 16.95%, and this is taxable value. So a couple of things happened here. The homestead exemption increased from $25,000 to $40,000. That had some impact here, but probably the bigger impact in some respects is the fact that we had, because of that huge increase, you know, homesteads are capped at the 10% increase. So we had way higher than 10%, so we had, we have a much bigger cap than we have had in the past. So it's 16.95%. Like I said, it's a 13.84 reduction from the preliminary values, very much higher than what you'll see in all those previous years there, and much higher as far, as far as the final increase than what you see in those previous years. So this is kind of what it looks like graphically. We have had in 10 years, we have had 104.7% increase in values over a 10-year period. And so this is the impact of that $40,000 homestead exemption on our values. The original homestead exemption was about $360 million. After the $40,000 is $550 million. That's that net taxable value that I showed of the 8.8 billion. We have freeze taxable values right now of $780 million, and then that freeze adjusted taxable value is just right at 8 mil, 8 billion. So the net taxable value under review still is about $80 million. And the, when they give us their, the values to calculate the tax rate, they will take apart a portion of that 80 million and assume it's going to be taxable. So then the total impact on the district is a decrease in the net taxable value, of the homestead exemption, is a decrease in the next taxable value of $190 million. Some of our other effective tax rate assumptions, and you will see some more information when we look later on, when we talk about setting the proposed, the meeting for the proposed budget and tax rate, you've got the notice in your packet that shows all the detail on that. Our new market value is $215 million. New taxable value is right at $200 million. The count of our homestead residences is 13,791. Our average market value, and this is, this is kind of where you're going to see where this, the caps and the increased homestead exemption come in. Average market value was $169,000 last year. It's $216,000 for this coming year. But the average homestead residence exemptions went from about $39,000 to $84,000 with those caps. And so the average taxable doesn't have as drastic a change, $120,000, $130,000, $232,300. So not as big a difference. This is the calculation of our maintenance and operations tax rate. Our district's adopted M and O rate for the tax year last year was $1,244. Then we have, this is, again, our certified values were $7.5 billion, $7.6 billion. Our new certified values are $8.8 billion. That's a 16.95% increase. That gets applied to our comptroller's values. Now, the comptroller's values are slightly different from our local values, and the comptroller's values is what they use in calculating our share, our local share for state funding. This went up quite a bit this year from what it was last year, because the TIF has expired, and there's, there was about $530 million worth of property in the TIF, and so that adds back now. It's no longer a deduction. It never was a deduction for our local values, but it was a deduction for the comptroller's values. So it's been added back in, and so now we're richer. We're a richer district all of a sudden, and we, our local share goes up with that. So we go on down to the maximum compressed tax rate. For the prior year was 88.6 cents, and then we go down. So this year, we get, we hit the minimum, the minimum maximum compressed rate of 80.46 cents. We have those pennies, like I said earlier, in 2015-16 year, we had that TRE in November of 2015, and we, the voters voted in 17 cents of enrichment tax, but that did get changed a little bit with House Bill 3 as well. The golden pennies, we originally had seven, I think it was seven, was it, of golden pennies, and the rest were copper pennies. And then when they changed the law, we were allowed to move a penny to the golden pennies out of the copper, and then the copper pennies got compressed. So now we're only at 13.83 cents instead of the 17 cents that our voters voted in. So our enrichment rate went down slightly. That gives us a total M and O rate for next year of 94.29 cents. That's a decrease in the M and O rate of about eight cents, which is going to fund our debt service, our increased debt service for this coming year.
That's huge, huge for us, to have that decrease on the M and O side while we're building schools and increasing on the other side, so that we're not raising that tax rate. Really, really, really good for us.
So just a little bit about the TIF, and this will be the only time you'll ever have to hear this, because it's gone away after this. We have been participating in the TIF since, I think, the late 80s. What, over a period of time, as the law has changed, the way the TIF has been calculated has changed. As I was talking about earlier, early, any TIF that was formed prior to 1998, you were, you had the deduction from your comptroller's values for the value of that property. So we weren't expected to collect on that, those values as part of our local match. Then in 2005-6, they could, when they first compressed the tax rate from $1.50 down to $1.33, everybody that had a TIF started screaming, all the cities and all, because those tax rates got lowered and their revenues got lowered so much with that, and because in the following year, it went from that down to $1.4. And so they were really upset over that. So... So what has happened since 2005, 6, we have to pay into the TIF. And that's the red part you see down at the bottom. We had to pay into the TIF the equivalent of whatever our 2005, 6 tax rate was. So for the maintenance and operations, that was $1.42 back in 2005, 6. You know, we're down to 80 cents. So it's a big, huge difference. But we have to pay into the TIF at that rate. And so we are only collecting though, in the gold bar that you see, we only collect based on what our tax rate is. And so there's a, then there's a gap between what we have to pay to the TIF and what we're going to collect. That's in that top bar. And then that's a new program that came in after 5, 6 with the compression that the state put in this whole harmless amount. So we have been generating money from a supplemental payment in our foundation school program to make us whole for that money we have to pay into the TIF. Now, again, that's going away. But as you can see by this slide, we, this past year, we got 2.2 million from the state for the TIF. We got revenues of 6.3 million. We only paid 7.9. We're actually going to lose $600,000 on this deal. So it's not, and part of it is the way our debt service kind of interplayed with this. But this was, we're going, we're getting out of the TIF a year earlier than what we had originally expected. But T E A and the comptroller's office had decided that it expired this year. So we're not going, we won't be continuing with that. And then this shows kind of what happens with that TIF going away. You see, kind of see the gap of what our local values and what our comptroller's values were. And they've come much closer here in this, in this next year because of that 530 million expiring in the TIF zone. And not having it as a deduction for the comptroller's values. So this is then our debt service rate. This is how, this is going to be calculated. It was 22 cents last year. And with our original debt service requirements for this coming year was 10.4 million. With the 200 million we issued in February, that, that debt service for next year will be 9.9 million. And then we're getting ready to issue another 75 million. And that debt service is about four and a half million for next year. So in total, you've got another million and a half coming in there. So our total debt service requirement for this coming year will be 24.9 million. We get 220, I'll skip that 644. We get 221 million through the foundation school program to help us with our debt service. That went down too this year because of us, again, being a little richer. That unencumbered fund balance, it looks like I'm drawing down the fund balance by 644,000 to help pay that debt. But that really represents like penalties and interest and prior year taxes. So it's not really going to draw down the debt service fund balance. Anyway, so our total debt that will, debt service will need is 20, right at 24 million. And I'm anticipating 100% collection rate. So that rate needs to be 29, 8969, based on the tax office's calculations. And for a total tax rate of $1.241869. That is a slight decrease from last year. It's a decrease in the combination, of the combined rate, 0.002771. So, you know, we were able to maintain, have all this new debt service and still maintain the tax rate. And then again, this is just a graph of what we've been doing from the debt service fund and paying into the TIF. And that one does equal, because you don't get the same offset on the, you don't still have the same situation with the tax rate that you had with 5, 6 tax rate. And you don't have that offset from the state for a supplemental payment. This is basically what our tax rate looks like for the last few years. You can see there where that tax rate compressed after 2005, 6. You can see in 2008 where we issued our first bonds, the last bond election, went up in 2008 and up a little bit more in 2009 when we issued the second batch of bond. And then in 2015, 16, you see where we had the tax ratification election and the tax rate went up a little bit there. And then with the enactment of House Bill 3 in, what year is that? That's too little for me to see. 19, you can see where it started compressing. And it's going down each year with that maximum compressed tax rate. So let's look at the general fund and the, the impact on the revenues here. This kind of shows you our adopted budget was about 69.5 million in tax collections. Looks like we're only going to collect about 67.8. We did have some huge refunds at the beginning of the year. The tax office settled some outstanding lawsuits that had been hanging out there for a number of years. And so we're not collecting quite as much as what we had expected. But we're looking at 81.8 million as a proposed tax collections for next year. That's a $12.3 million increase. However, that's offset with 19.5 million dollar loss in our state revenue. Because again, property tax values go up, state revenue goes down. And that's also because we're, I don't have that budgeted at quite as high amount enrollment in ADA as we had last year. You have some decrease there. The difference between the two, though, is offset because you've got no payments into the TIF. And so we'll look at that. That will be, there will be an offset on the expenditure side for that. So you see the interplay between the local property tax collection and the state foundation school revenue. And then that difference kind of between the 19 million and the 12 million is because we don't have to pay this 7.9 million dollars into the TIF. You'll see a reduction in our expenditure budget for that. And then you see a big increase on our other direct federal programs. That is E-rate revenue of 3.2 million that we expect to get, that we've already been awarded. We've already been notified of an award to continue with our technology purchases. Then we do have a slight loss. Again, values will impact the aid that we get to operate the 1882 campuses. So we had budgeted 18, a million eight for the current year. We're just under that, I think, projection wise. But for next year, we'll only get about a million six on that. So we'll lose about 200,000 there. And these are, I went ahead and included what the transformation zone allocations are. This shows the revenue that is generated in the transformation zone. They generate a total of 23.2 million between the five campuses. And if you look at, there's an interesting thing. Because if you look at this, how much they generate and how much we actually get in foundation school program, they get almost half of it. But the thing is, they don't get any property tax revenue. So remember, our property tax collections are the match for a foundation school program. We keep all of that. So they're still only getting 15%. But if you just look at foundation program by itself, it looks like they're getting almost half. And it's kind of scary. Now, when you go down towards the bottom, you'll see those optional purchase services and the administrative services. Optional purchase services, they buy back services from us. And those are primarily middle school athletics. They don't conduct their own. We do that for them. Special ed, a lot of, they have their own, their self-contained units. And their teachers, they, they get the funding for and they staff. But they don't have diagnosticians and speech therapists and those things that we do as a district. They buy those back from us. And then the other big one is the dyslexia teachers. They buy those back from us as well. They could do their own program, but they do buy that from us. Then administrative services, that's basically all of our, everything, I say, that's all of Function 41, except the superintendent's office and all of our Function 21, which is our instructional leadership. So they kind, they buy those services. And also it does include Function 53, our technology services and things, plant maintenance and operations and some of those. But they, they, they pay us back about 3 and 3.3 million dollars for those things. So these are some of the significant expenditure reductions and increases we had in the general fund. I mean, there's more than this because it is actually, you know, I went through it with a fine-tooth comb. And we, we have additional requests that were funded last year that weren't this year. But they're pretty small amounts. This is the big ones. Salary increases with adjustments for the general fund was 2.7 million. Our group health insurance is 0.6 million. Teacher retirement, 0.4 million. That is a legislative rate increase that, you know, we have to pay. We had utility rate adjustments. Actually thought these were going to be lower when I presented back in May. Looked like they were going to be lower, but we've really had some huge increases in utilities. So that went up a little bit more than what I had expected. Then our other property and liability insurance, about $100,000. E-rate purchases. Now, the expenditure side of the budget's going to go up. Where we saw that revenue for E-rate, that 3.2 million dollars coming in, you're going to see that on the expenditure side where we're going to buy all that equipment that, that, that money's funding. And then we have, like I said, we had, have in there right now, 0.2 million dollars for some fencing, for some of our campuses who don't have fencing around them. We have some money set aside as well that we've got some other projects. We are waiting on some quotes for, but locks and doors and, and those kinds that we're going to start with immediately. Special education, as we talked earlier, we've got a 1.1 million dollar increase there. And then with all this technology, you know, they get you first and then you're, you're on the technology and then they start raising the prices. So we got a 0.3 million dollar increase on that. And then we, some of those programs that we were talking about earlier, Guama, Guaca, and the day school for the deaf don't fully fund themselves. And so we do operating transfers to those programs. And that's about a 0.3 million dollar increase for this coming year. Reductions, as we talked about earlier this year, it looked like if we had done a salary increase and we had the kind of losses that we had sustained this past, this past year and we're looking at for revenue for next year, looked like we could be up to maybe a nine or 10 million dollar deficit. Because we have a deficit this year. So we, Dr. King Hanon and the team put together kind of what we were going to do to reduce personnel to help offset that loss. I have to give credit, I told the leadership team earlier this week that Daniel Lopez is the GOAT for this summer. Because I have been, I've been doing this for about 40 years. And I have had lots of plans of how we're going to cut staff and we're going to do these things. And it just don't happen. And he really made it happen. He talked to people. He made sure nobody lost a job. They might be moved to a different campus. But everything was done through attrition. And we made the goal that we had set for ourselves to make these cuts. And so you see that there. The numbers of staff that are cut are not quite the same as the dollars. Because the dollars that you see are just general fund dollars. So we cut about 3.1 million out of the general fund. And that, and this is salaries and benefits. And then one of the things we did in the current year, and we've got that planned for the current year, for next year and the following year, at least at this point, was we transferred about 0.8 million with benefits of dyslexia teachers to S R funds to help. Because we did at, in S R 2, part of that money was designated to help offset our losses that we had due to COVID and the low enrollments. And so we're using part of that money to help with the general fund. And then the expiration of the tax increments, as I said, that's 7.9 million reduction in our
Before you go on, it should, it is, professional positions is minus 13. Is that correct? I didn't catch that, the first go. Oh, it is plus. So how is that the reduction?
So it's not, it's a net reduction.
Oh, okay.
What, on the professional staff, we did go on, we changed to go to librarians. For one thing, was professional librarians. And so we had, had some aides in those classrooms. So there are a cut in the paraprofessionals. And then we added professional librarians in there. And then there's a few other positions where they were, I think, kind of in the maintenance area, actually, where they were reclassified from the auxiliary schedule to the professional schedule. But just several of those kinds of
But net combined, it ended up being a reduction.
So it looks like, I, I think you said earlier that we reduced 88 positions. I think that's what those numbers add up to. And didn't lay off people. We shifted people. And basically either folks left and we didn't fill positions or we had positions that weren't filled that we didn't fill again. That's amazing.
It was really good work. And it was a team effort. And Daniel did the heavy lifting with talking to employees and helping getting them, helping them to get reassigned. But we, we had that goal to do that through attrition. And, and we worked it pretty much all summer. So it was a process.
Get my nails and waited for the forms to come in and see if they were going, if we were going to get there.
And we, we did get there. So we're
And we feel good about the coverage.
You can ask.
We do. And we didn't cut any programs by doing that either. So we, you know, we kept all of our programs for our kids, which was one of those priorities that we had. There were a lot of, were some really intentional things that we'd been putting in place the last two to three years in terms of interventions and programs for kids for academic recovery. And then of course, all of our other programs that we value, the arts and athletics. And, and we didn't make any cuts to any of that. So we just got a little leaner in other areas where we could do it.
Well, we were looking at reports in May comparing our district to the other districts in the state. And we were heavy in staff in so many different places. And so I'm assuming this brings us more in line with state averages of numbers of
That's correct. We, in 2020, we did a staffing review with the Texas Association of School Boards. And it showed that we were heavy in some areas more than others. Paraprofessionals particularly. So you see that number there of paraprofessionals. And so that does help us to, to get closer to norms in those areas. But we used that staffing study as a guide to make our decisions. And that was, we were really, really glad that we'd had that done already. We weren't able to implement it sooner because we had COVID. And we, you know, we, we were receiving that report, I think, about May of 2020, just as COVID was hitting. And then we were juggling other things. But this was, this was the time to use that report. So it was really good.
And I think, you know, the teachers, we need to see that. That variable cost. When you don't have kids, you don't need teachers. And a lot of these teaching positions actually were vacant a good part of last year anyway. Because we just didn't have the kids for them.
Yeah, and I would say if, if kids come back, if our numbers start going up, we'll have to add teachers to accommodate those numbers. But we'll have the off, we'll have, that will be offset by increased revenues because of the ADA. So you might see us, should students come back, want to add some teaching positions. We'll need to do that.
What about the paraprofessional positions? Like all 69 of them, were that they were just reassigned? Or were these vacant positions from last year?
Both. So vacant positions and some reassignments. I think fewer reassignments than vacant positions, but predominantly vacant positions. And we, we saw this coming. So we, you know, we held off on filling some positions to, toward the end of the school year.
Great work. I just think to see, see this happen is amazing. And the fact that we'll still have enough coverage is great news. So thank you guys for all the hard work.
Were you able to determine the, the, what the cause of the utility increase was?
A lot of it was in water this summer. But just, I think that just, for us, not so much in electricity. Because we've actually bought our electricity through 27. And so we're not being impacted by the electricity rates as much as we were some gas and water or those things. But water was the big one.
Ms. Davis, I kind of want to second what Mr. Davis said in that really
Ms. Davis, I kind of want to second what Mr. Davis said in that really, thank you so much for the administration and your staff for really taking care of our employees and making sure that they have another position they can move through and really kind of doing this primarily through attrition. That means, that means a lot to our families and our community and also for, I'll go ahead and for the insurance coverage, making sure that our, we have an option for our employees where there is a free option for them, you know, as we're having to pay a little bit more. I think that's an important aspect, just as we have done a 3% increase in their pay. We know inflation is a little bit more than three. So any way that we can help offset that for our employees, I think, is really important. So I just wanted to.
Well, and I think it's going to be important for us to position ourselves for further salary increases if we're going to remain competitive. And so I think, as we'll talk a little bit later, that's going to be some of our concerns going forward.
Thank you.
So this is basically the general fund. This is what it looks like for next year. It's a repeat of those first schedules that I showed at the beginning. With what it looks like right now, we would have revenues of 157 million, expenditures of 160. And then we have the, you see that, those transfers into the Guama, Guaca, day school for the deaf of 160, no, it was a million 30 down there. That would show budgetarily a 3.3 million dollar expenditures over revenues next year. And that's what we're going to adopt. I will say with our history, I do take out salary savings. I don't budget salaries at 100% because I look at historically what we've underspent. I don't take 100% of that, but I do usually take at least half of the salary savings out upfront. We underspent our instructional aides by 12% last year. And our auxiliary staff was by, I think, about 13 or 14%. So I take about half of that. I took about 5% out for aides, 6% out on auxiliary upfront. So I recognize some of that savings so we don't show such a big deficit and we can do salary increases. That said, we'll probably still underspend some. And I'm thinking that we could underspend the 3.3 million. And we might, depending on how many of our kids come back and what the attendance looks like, we could actually end up at least at a break even point next year. I'm hoping for that. And like I said, based on what we historically do, that wouldn't surprise me at all for us to end up like there. So that is now about 24%, though. The ending fund balance, unassigned fund balance would be at 38 million. 24% of our annual expenditures. So that's a little on the lower side than I would like to see. Our policy is at 20%. If we drop down below 20%, we have to come up with a plan to bring it back up. There's not really a rule of thumb that's put out by the state or T E A for fund balance. Reason for that, it depends on your property wealth. Because for poor districts that get more money from the state, they have a much more even cash flow and they don't have to have as big a fund balance. When you get more money from property taxes, then you have those spikes in your cash flow. And so you kind of have to keep a little bit bigger fund balance to cover those periods when you're not getting revenue. So 20% is what we have in our policy. Like I said, this should be about 24% at the end of the year. This is kind of what that fund balance looks like, where it's been. You know, we've had some years. And I told leadership team, I always have to start there when it was almost down to zero. I wasn't here then, okay. But at one point, we almost wiped out the fund balance and it took us quite a while to start building that back up again. And when I did get here in 2004, we even had a million dollar deficit in our food service fund. So we've been in a really good, safe position. And by having at least a decent fund balance, you can weather things like we've had the last few years. And if you don't have that, you know, it's just having like a savings account. If you don't have anything in your savings account, it's really hard to weather the bad times. And we've had three years of bad times.
There's not a state marker for what a get worried percentage would be, but do you have one?
Well, like I said, for me personally, I'd like to see it between like 25 to 30% in that range.
But below 20, then you get anxious.
We've set it as a board set in policy at 20.
And I'd say there's some, there's some legislative issues with having too much of a fund balance because we'll be looking to the legislature to help us. And they'll often look at how much we have in our fund balances.
Right.
Will want us to use that money. So you really do, you have to weigh all of those factors in there.
And like, you know, Texas Department of Agriculture for Food Service wants that at 25%. And when you exceed that, because we'll look at that when we look at food service, we are a little bit higher than that and that's why we have an excess fund balance. But they like it at the 25%. So I think that's probably a good, for the, our property values and the way our money flows, I think that would be adequate.
24% is very strong.
Okay, so here's these other two adopted budgets that are part of the official budget. Our Child Nutrition Fund, we are going to have revenues of about 9.9 million dollars this year. Local revenues, 435,000. And then federal revenues of 9.5 million. Food service mainly is federal revenues because we are community eligibility provision for our food service. That means all of our kids eat free. And so that 435,000 that you see is catering and, you know, staff eating in the cafeteria, basically. And so right now, we're looking, we started out with a fund balance of about 4.1 million, looking at an ending fund balance with this. We'll draw it down about a million dollars, so about 3 million. Some of that is, we're still buying some equipment for food service because we've got to draw down the fund balance. So this is deliberate to draw this down. Because even with that, with that kind of a drawdown, I don't think we'll be at 27.7 because at some point, at some point, we're going to get that freezer and cooler that we've been trying to get for three years now, it's going to come in and it's going to help draw this fund balance down. I don't know when, but it's been delayed now again till September, October for shipment. But hopefully we'll get it soon. But as I said, we need to keep, 25% is what we're supposed to have. We have excess fund balance of about 292,000 with this, but it was close to 2 million before. So it's in better shape. Debt Service Fund, talked a little bit about what makes this up. We have a beginning fund balance of 3.9 million, 24.9 million in revenues, about 24.9 million in expenditures. So we have wrong expenditures over revenues. Ending position should be 3.9 million because that number is left from the previous slide for food service, excuse me, for the million, 58,000 showing there. Should have deleted that line. So fund balance there and the Debt Service Fund is 16%. And our outstanding debt as of August 31st with selling the 75 million will be 385 million dollars. These are those last budgets. As we talked about, the Greater Waco Healthcare Academy and Manufacturing Academy are actually budgeted for in the same fund. They are showing a loss in the Healthcare Academy, about 375,000. A loss in the Manufacturing Academy of about 210,000. We can't leave those funds in a deficit situation. So we'll need to move money from the general fund to cover any of this. I mean, these are budgeted amounts. Hopefully they'll come in a little bit better, they did this year. Challenge Academy pays for itself. And then the Day School for the Deaf, we do have a bigger loss there. It looks like about 445,000. That's a very expensive program. And we do get the ADA for all the kids in that program regardless of what district they come from. So we do transfer money over to that fund to make it whole every year. So we have that million 30,000 dollars that we had shown as an operating transfer on the, in the general fund that will fund those.
Mrs. Davis, excuse me. So on the Healthcare Academy, I think, I, for some reason, remember back that that one had actually generated enough revenue. What, was it just less students enrolled this year or this past year? Was that the?
More districts are, I think, are opening their own programs.
Yeah, and we, we saw less of our own students participating because they were behind in their credits due to COVID and just lack of engagement with high school students. So we saw that both at Guama and Guaca, all of our CTE programs actually suffered because kids had to make up their core content areas and didn't have room to fit those in their schedule. So we're just catching up.
Okay, great. Yeah, because usually I remember that one usually made.
Guaca at one point was paying for itself.
Just barely.
But it was. Guama has always been, because it's kind of an expensive program with small class sizes. So it's much harder, I think, to, for revenues to meet expenditures, but.
Anytime you have a small facility like that, you have overhead costs and you're just going to have a harder time generating enough revenue to pay for it.
Yeah, that's great. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so 25th is the date. We will have the public meeting at the beginning of the meeting to get input on the, just a brief presentation and then we get input on the budget and tax rate. I don't know when the last time I had any. But then we, later that same evening, we will adopt the budget and then the tax rate. It's, I've got it set with the tax office. I said August 12th, but I talked to the guy at the tax office today. He's going to publish August 15th. So he's got that all set to go in the newspaper. It's like, it's kind of funny that you've still posted the newspaper, but we have to post it online on our website as well. So we'll adopt the budget on the 25th.
Okay.
No action is necessary on this tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. That was a wonderful presentation and informative. And I think you're up again for the next.
My meeting.
It is your meeting, actually.
So we have Rob Collins here with us tonight. So the other thing that we need to do in, because of needing this into our, getting into our tax rate for this coming year, is we are going to issue another 75 million dollars in the second piece of the bonds. After this, we'll have 80 million left to issue. We've issued 200 million back in February. This will be 75 million of it. So basically, we're taking action tonight to approve the order authorizing the issuance. And it says from time to time, because we try to catch that good moment for issuing bonds where the rates are good. We've done a really great job the last couple of years on that. The team has done a great job. But in aggregate principle, amount not to exceed 75 million. Then we levy the tax and provide for the security and payment thereof, providing for the award of the sale thereof in accordance with specified parameters, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more purchase contracts and paying agent registrar agreements relating to such bonds and approving the preparation of one or more official statements and enacting other provisions related thereto. And you could tell an attorney wrote that. So we're just asking for approval tonight for us to be able to issue the 75 million in bonds. Approval of the order. And you want to come talk?
Ms. Davis? Rob Collins with Bracewell. Again, it's hard to believe, it was a year ago we were standing here calling the bond election for November. Lots gone on since then, but this is the second issuance from that successful election in November. And this is the same format we did back in early, it was January, February, where Dr. Kinghanon and Ms. Davis both have the authority, once, if you approve the order tonight, to pull the trigger on this and time the market with Dusty at RBC Capital Markets and your financial advisor and their team to get the best deal for the district and to have this included in your tax rate for this year. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I did write all those words and I apologize. They have some meaning, so I can't explain it if you really want me to.
Are there any questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion to, I'll entertain a motion. To approve the administration's recommendations.
Make a motion to approve the administration's recommendations.
I second.
Okay, Mr. Grant, thank you. So are there any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and it passes unanimously. Yes, Ms. Davis?
One more item. So the last thing that we have to do tonight is set the date for that public meeting that we talked about and that proposed tax rate. So this is, you have attached to this item the notice that will go in the newspaper and online of, that we have to publish for the budget and tax rate. And then you also, new requirement the last year, you have the calculation of that tax rate. So I wanted to, we had a couple of questions. I want to make sure that those get addressed. That there is a rate, a no new revenue rate that I think the county has adopted on, when you look at the tax rate calculation on line 25, it does calculate that no new revenue rate, which would be a dollar three for Waco ISD. But that no new revenue rate is total. It's not, it's not M and O. It's total M and O and debt service. So if we adopted a rate of a dollar three, we would still have to cover the 29 cents of debt service out of that dollar three. That would lower our M and O rate down to 73 cents, something like that. We would lose about six and a half million dollars in funding overall with that rate. So the no new revenue rate really doesn't apply to school districts. That's why we have this secondary calculation that T E A does for that maximum compressed rate. Because we fall under that little bit different law for, from HB3. And in this, if you have any questions, there's this section two on that page three of the calculation that kind of discusses that, what the maximum compressed rate does and then how that enrichment tax rate works on top of it and then talks about the debt rate. So this is the calculation. We are required to provide that to you and post that. Like I said, that's kind of a new thing the last year. And anyway, so this will be posted and we will have the, so what we're recommending tonight is that you approve the notice of public meeting to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate for the 22, 23 fiscal year, setting the proposed tax rate and the date, time and place for the public meeting, which would be August 25th of '22 at 6:00 PM in the Waco ISD Administration Building.
Entertaining motion for the administration's recommendation?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the notice of a public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate for the 22, 23 fiscal year, setting the proposed tax rate and date, time and place for the public meeting, August 25th, '22, 6:00 PM at Waco ISD Administration Building.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. I appreciate that, all of the information. And Mr. Collins, thank you for coming out and being here. Appreciate that. Okay, announcements, Mr. De Beere.
There's a lot that's happening in just the next four days. Want to remind you, I think we've talked about it before, but our friends at Ascension Providence host their medical mission at home on Saturday at the base at Extraco. It's an incredible event for our community that offers a wide range of free health services and medical screenings. Then on Monday, the state releases the official accountability ratings that we've been talking about projections for over the last few months. In addition to getting the final word from the state, it's going to be a great opportunity to celebrate the growth our students achieved and the hard work of our educators to get them to that point. And then, of course, Tuesday is the celebration of the start of a new school year. And we're excited to kick off what we think is going to be an incredible 22, 23 school year in Waco ISD. Thank you.
Well, we are just wanting to, I'm looking forward to Monday to getting the official released ratings and seeing how well our students did. And I'm very, very hopeful. And I'm very, very hopeful and excited to see that. And just wanted to wish everyone a wonderful first day of school as we approach this Tuesday. So just to our staff, to our teachers, who is our staff, our students and our families. We just hope everyone has a wonderful first day of school this coming Tuesday. And with that, we are adjourned.